Good evening, everyone. Today, July 9, 2024 at 6:00 PM, a call for order. Please join me for the place of legend.
... of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, roll call.
Supervisor Aliaga.
Here.
Clerk Newbeck here.
Treasurer Brown.
Here.
Trustee Morocco.
Here.
Trustee Alamofo.
Here.
Trustee Ritchie.
Here.
And trustee Tetter.
Here.
Thank you. I believe before we approve the agenda, we're going to add some amendments.
Yes, I'd like to amend the agenda by adding to regular business L1 FOIA appeal number 2024-133 Terry Whitney and adding to closed session M2 discussion of a written confidential legal opinion pursuant to MCL 15.2681H and MCL 15.2431G.
Okay. Any motion to approve that?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
I'm sorry, hold on one second. I made the motion to amend it, we didn't have a second and a vote.
Second.
Okay. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, we approve the agenda. Board and Plaids announcement?
I'm sorry. We still have to finish with the motion to amend.
Okay.
So Terry, do you want to make your motion now to amend?
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
It's the board's.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Can we be close to the microphone so that we close the poll? Okay. All right, so that way people hear. Good, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Good. Okay. Board of public announcements?
I have a couple.
Sure.
I would like to talk about maybe going over the ordinance about political signs around here and maybe add it to the next agenda. I think there should be a few limits. Maybe we discuss how many at a corner or something. I think there's some that's just overkill, so that would be my request, maybe get it on the next meeting's agenda. My other one in relation to signs, there's a couple of people out there who have signs out, which I'm not talking about compliance about where they're located, I'm talking about being in compliance with the Michigan Campaign Finance Act, MCL Section 169.247. Casper, Tillman, Holland, and I don't know how to say her name, I'm sorry. Gojai, Gokai, she's running for trustee. Those signs are right now in violation of that, so you might want to look up MCL Section 169.247. And lastly, I wanted to remind everybody about the closure of Clintonville and Walden Road. It seems a lot of people have forgotten that, it happened on Monday, there's people aggravated. You're going to need a lot of patience with Baldwin and Clarkston still closed as well. And now Sashaba on one lane, hopefully just for a couple more days till this pavement by that gas station gets done. But people are whipping through neighborhoods, going through neighborhoods to cut through at 40 miles an hour, and that's unacceptable. Pack your patience, leave early, check the RCLC websites in the morning, it'll tell you all construction projects going on. So I just want to remind everybody about that Clintonville and Walden one. It's going to be a headache for Pine Knob for a few months, so no matter where you go in the township, it's going to be a little bit of a mess this summer, so just reminding everybody to take your time, leave early, and be respectful in neighborhoods.
Ball?
I'll just piggyback on what Terry said. I know a lot of people are upset about the construction and having Baldwin closed at Clarkston, now Clintonville and Walden closed, and a lot of other projects going on. There's a couple pieces of information that you'll be able to share with folks. Number one, the Clintonville and Walden project couldn't start until after July 1st because of eagle requirements due to the creeks that run through that area. They wouldn't let them begin because of different spawning of species and fish. So they couldn't start till July 1st or later. It had to be done this year because there's millions of dollars that they got through a federal grant that if we didn't spend it this year would be lost. So the road commission, that project, I don't remember the total cost, it's multiple millions of township, paid a fraction of that. And so, how much was it?
It's a three-party.
Yeah, so that's why it got jammed in there and the road commission felt there was no choice or it wouldn't have happened at all. So I just want to share that.
Yeah. Besides, since we're not having independence times to communicate people, we have been working in social media, we have the Independence Township Facebook, and that has allowed us to communicate right now, we try to post in every local group so people knows about it. Also, charity department is working with Google, so Google appears with whether the ideas affecting and redirect the people and the traffic too. And our charity department is working with Oakland County to make sure that we can mitigate or work out with the traffic and the issues, so. But thank you, Terry, and thank you, Paul. Anyone else? Okay, moving along. Public comments. If people, residents, have the opportunity to come to the podium, state your name and address, and speak for five minutes. This is no debate, this is no forum, this is just public comments. Anyone want address to the board?
Good evening, Tasha Shergan, 9393 Thornhill Drive. I'm one of the 13 people running for trustee, but I'm also on the Residential Open Spaces Advisory Committee, and tomorrow evening is our next meeting, so I just want to invite the public to please come and participate. Tomorrow it's actually going to be at the Clarkson Family Farm, but we're the, what is it, the second Monday, the second Wednesday of every month? So we want citizen participation and feedback, so please, everybody's invited, we'd love to see the whole township there. So tomorrow night at 6 o'clock at the Clarkson Family Farm. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'm Joette Coontz, 9740 Reese Road. I would just like to invite everybody to the Clarkson Garden Walk next week. It's on Wednesday from 11 to 7. The funds go for Clarkson Kids, Village Flowers, and the library landscaping. So you can get your tickets on Eventbrite, or the library, or Bourdines, or the Gateway. So come on out.
Thank you. Okay. Anyone else? Oh. Do you have somebody online? Oh, okay.
Hello, my name is Darwin Moore, 9165 Eevee Road, Clarkson, Michigan. Thank you for sharing those couple of events that are coming up. I'm not sure everyone knows where Clarkson Farms is, I believe it's at the corner of Cranberry Lake and M15. I'm not sure if that's where it's at or not.
Hubbard.
Hubbard, okay, by the school there. So thank you for sharing that with us. At the last meeting, I spoke to the board about an issue I'm having with a doc. I thought I heard some people say they wanted to look into it, this is no forum, we can't get any answers. It kind of, kind of seems to defeat having a public discussion if there is no discussion back and forth, but not one person has followed up with me on that. Not one of the board members has reached out to me or anyone else. As a matter of fact, Jose showed up to my house the other day by mistake. He was caught by surprise when he knocked on my door and I asked him to talk to me, and he walked away saying he would not talk to me because I was running against him. I'm really kind of embarrassed at that after Jose promised me that he would give me a letter stating that I could put my doc in to resolve this issue and promised me that that would be done because that attorneys work for the township, not the other way around, okay? I'm bringing this up to the board's attention because I think there is a lot going on that either you're overlooking, or you're sweeping under the rug, or not caring about. Again, I'm asking you to get involved, to discuss with me if we have to have a conversation with all of us, if we have to get me on the agenda, whatever we need to do to get the facts out here and let's get this resolved. There's an election coming up, and I don't know that I could support any one of you the way that I've been treated by this board. And as I've been out talking to residents and getting stuff, a lot of people feel the same way, whether it be about chicken coops, whether it be about signs, whether it be about lawns being mowed, or anything else. We're not getting as constituents, we're not getting what we want from our representatives. And that's you, you're elected, you work for us. There is no reason I should not be able to get written permission to do this unless somebody is covering something up or hiding something, or whatever the case may be. I have my suspicions, I don't want to make any accusations right now, but if you look at the facts and everything that I've gone through over this, it's just not right. And most of the people I hear get up here and complain are talking about the same kind of issues, the lack of information we're getting, or the incorrect information we're getting on a number of different things from a number of departments. I don't know who's responsible, whether it be the department, whether it be the supervisor or whatever, but someone needs to stand up, take some action, take some accountability, and do this. Even under a clean slate act, I should get some kind of reprieve here, and I'm not. And I'm being treated different than everyone else, and not one of you have come to me personally and said, hey, let's get this straightened out. And the fact that I was promised it and then turned around and won't even be spoken to because I've gotten involved in politics makes me think even more that there's other reasons behind this, and this is not right. And it will come out, so please, address this, help me get this revol, resolved. I've tried to do this back in February so I could get this going before the summer is over, and I can't. I am not giving the privileges, I pay taxes, I pay a lot of taxes to live on that lake, but yet I am not given the same privileges and rights that everyone else has, and no one here seems to give a damn, not one iota. I see people walk around with all these right shirts on, proud to be right. When are you going to be proud to do right? That's all we want you to do, is do what's right. And I don't see anyone stepping up, and that scares me. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else before we? Anyone online that would like to speak? Okay, no one, oh, sure, state your name and address, please.
Sure, my name is Debbie, and I'm a former employee of Independence Township. And I'd like to start off that I was asked to attend a meeting on June 5th to discuss an investigation they called a due process. So during that meeting that I had with the attorney, my direct supervisor Linda, and the HR, I was told that there was some concerns that they had. The first one was ridiculous, second one even more ridiculous, but then the third one was the bank reconciliations. I want to point out, I started in September of 2023, the bank recs were not reconciled from February of 2023 coming on board of September 2023. The August bank rec was not completed because Treasury could not reconcile until November. Once that was done, I was able to reconcile November. I was told that I only reconciled one bank statement while I was there. December, and again, Treasury was not reconciled. February, the treasurer and the finance director had a meeting to bring someone in to assist them with the Treasury Department to help reconcile those bank recs. And the auditor was getting very upset because those were not done. Fast forward, April 2022, I made a complaint to the HR and to Jennifer Spiegel on April, actually, April 22nd, to the deputy supervisor. Quote, "Did you speak to Carrie about my concerns?" Her response, "Yes, I did." She was going to have a talk with Linda about quite a few things. And while talking to her, she has no intention of firing you." This is April 2022, or I'm sorry, April 22nd, 2024. That is when I made my complaint against Linda and also about my sexual harassment to the deputy supervisor. Again, May, I went to training. Linda reassured me, "No, that's not the case, we don't want you, we, you know, I haven't had time, I haven't had time to train with you, we want to send you to training, you know, this, that, and the other." We, you know, I had to wait until, you know, the audit was done. Now, go back into my meeting in June, they said because bank recs weren't done and they kept stacking things on. Then to find out, they said that I did not, I paid the IRS back in December of 2023, that I overpaid the IRS. I had, they, I was at home when this happened, okay? I was at home, I was called, and I was told to pay the IRS, they could not get into the IRS. I had full-blown COVID. And so when I came back to work about a week, two weeks later, I was told that I had to go into the, there's a BSN A software, and I had to make these payments and everything. So I went into it, I made the payment to the IRS. Linda, then in January, said, Debbie, you overpaid the IRS. And I was like, oh my God, I couldn't even remember that I overpaid them. Remind you, everything happened, that happened back in December of 2023. Fast forward to June, they're stacking all this stuff up against me. I am at a loss here and about the, about Carrie and about Paul. These bank recs weren't done, which they blamed on me. They had a meeting that said that, you know what, no one knew what job responsibilities each department had when it came to this. In May, they sent me to training. And then they had a, they told me the next day on June 5th that I could have a meeting because I told them, they told me on June 5th that, you know what, I can come in the next day, but I didn't have to come in, that I can just write a written response. Then I wrote my written response to refute everything they accused me of. Then they said, I talked to the attorney, and they said, well, you know what, we're going to have a special meeting on June 10th. So I'm like, okay, well, I want this in closed session, I don't want my name out there, this is embarrassing. Then I'm like, no, I want people to know what's going on and what's happening there. Then I was like, no, this would be a hit job on myself and to Jose. So what they did, they went ahead and they had a meeting without, and I pulled out of the meeting, I said, I don't want to go. So they had the meeting, they posted the agenda, but then they had a closed meeting, which wasn't posted on the agenda, to discuss an attorney opinion. This has just been really hard on me, and I think that Carrie should be ashamed of herself, Paul should be ashamed of himself, because what they're doing is they're trying to make me look like the fall guy because they didn't get a good audit. This has affected me because if in April of, April 22nd, from the deputy supervisor, we have no intention of firing you, because she spoke with Linda, my direct supervisor, and then they sent me the training in May, and then on June 5th, at May 21st is when they had their committee meeting about their defaults of their bank recs not being done and all the journal entries that had to be done. They fired, well, they fired, well, they didn't even fire me on June 10th because they went into a closed session to discuss the attorney opinion, but then came out and just closed the session right out. So I don't know what was discussed in that. So I'm just in a shack that this is even happening. Why this happened to me, why you guys want to put me underneath a bus when I was a good employee? Are you guys there? Because I got.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Why send me to training? Why in April 2020, or 2024, Carrie has no intention of firing you after I make a sexual harassment complaint? And then in June, in that meeting, you stacked all these things against me that happened back in December, that I wasted $100,000, that you guys went ahead and had your meeting and said that I did all these things. And that's untrue. And when you guys said that, I didn't pay the trustees, I was two weeks late paying the trustees their money. I was told by Linda, my direct supervisor, just wait until the next payroll. And then I went to Carrie and I said, Carrie, this is what happened, because Carrie wants to know everything that's going on. And I told Carrie it was an oversight. Carrie said, make sure, is this an oversight, will this ever happen again? I said, no, it was an oversight, because we've had problems with payroll happening. They also said that I, they also said that I didn't pay MERS, or they said that I paid MERS, but I didn't pay it correctly. What Carrie doesn't know is that MERS, there was a $10,000. Go ahead.
Can you wrap it up, please? Because everybody has five minutes, so.
What am I at?
Yeah, you pass, I mean, if you can wrap it up, please.
Sure. All I'm saying is, is that because of the bad management of Carrie and Paul, because if Paul had his ducks in row, he wouldn't have to have someone come in and reconcile his taxes. And Carrie, if she was a good supervisor or a good trustee, she would have put, or she would have helped me with my complaint of sexual harassment and also my complaints against my direct supervisor Linda back in April of 2022. But you don't send them on the training in May.
Okay. I mean, yeah, I think your time is up, I'm sorry, but thank you.
It's okay. I think it's fine. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Okay. Anyone else that would like to address to the board? Please state your name and address.
Hi, my name is Mary Ann Hallett. I live at 5799 Pineberry Street, and I am very concerned about this, what she's saying, and about lies that I'm hearing, about colluding to take out elected official, and all this stuff that's going on that nobody sees. Here, I have a picture of my signs being taken, and they're in the dumpster. Now, if you can't allow me a voice to put my signs out without taking them, which is illegal, how are we supposed to think that you're going to run a fair election if you can't run a fair campaign? This is absolutely ridiculous. I'm very concerned, and everybody here should be concerned, because this is not right. It's not right what you're doing, it's not right the lies that you're speaking. I was accused of taking marijuana money before I even took a dime. And who started that rumor anyways? It's just a, it's just a bad rumor, and nobody should believe it. Nobody should believe what's coming out of the mouths of these people. And I'm tired of it, and I want my signs back. They cost me money, and my donors pay for those, and it's not right, they're being taken.
It's not a debate.
Well, you answer some people sometimes.
Anyone else would like to address to the board? Please come to the podium and state your name and address. This is not a debate or forum, please, it's public comments.
Hi, Tina Hollis, 6292 Lake Walden Drive, Clarkston. I agree with her in some point. Yesterday, I came in to the office, and I was just inquiring about cameras. That's all I was doing, is asking, because people brought it up to me, the cameras near the ballot box, okay? So all I did was ask. So all I did was ask. Then all of a sudden I find out my sign's missing. I didn't know about the ordinance, you know, I, I, I mean, I'm new at all this, so I, I don't want to do anything wrong. But it was far away from the road with McLean and other people. And I have noticed there's some people get to keep their signs up. So I'm with Mary Ann that I don't think it's fair that some people can have their signs up. But others can't. So that's got to quit. And all this babbling and against each other, I'm sick of it. We're all good people here. Enough of negativity, please. All these people are sick of it. Let's just be kind to each other, for God's sakes. You know, I don't know some of you. But I want to get to know you. I don't listen to gossip, all right? All of you, anybody here? I hate it. I know some of you, you're sweethearts. So no more of saying bad things about this person saying that thing because you know what, it all reflects on you. It doesn't reflect on the individual. If you hate somebody so much, keep it to yourself because that's so immature. Anybody, okay? Just let, just let this vote. We don't want to act like Washington. And that's what everybody says it sounded like Washington. Okay, that's all I got to say, but I'm with Mary Ann. Just leave our signs. If I, if I did something wrong, I didn't know any better. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to come to the podium?
Mark Branch House, 66711, 6677 Level Drive, Clarkston, Michigan. First, I just want to thank all the candidates running and you guys on the board. Meet the candidates. I got to talk to a lot of you guys. Kind of inform me on the issues. My only other, why I came up because I heard the lady just say, you know, Whitmer's putting out all these boxes for ballots. I was just wondering, as I pulled in, do we have surveillance on the box out there 24 hours a day? Where we put ballots? We do? Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? State your name and address, please.
7925 Foster Road, Linda Pazon. The only reason I came up is because of the cameras. Yesterday Tina and I came out because she questioned me about the cameras, so I came out to look. There is a camera right here in the building that faces the ballot box, but there's like this green box, I don't know what that's for, that's in front of it. So how we stood, we stood in front of the box. If you stand in front of the box and you're putting 100 ballots in there, camera can't see you because that green box is covering it. Then there's another camera on the side of the building that points that way, but there's a pine tree that's covering up that camera. So we did do a FOIA because we wanted to see and can, and be sure that that box is secure, but it doesn't seem like it is. So I know you said it is, but I don't think it is. So if you would look into that, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you. Anyone else that would like to address to the board? Public comments? Come to the podium and state your name and address. No? Now I'm online? Okay, moving along. We don't have public hearing. We have presentation and report. We don't have Carrie over. Consent agenda. Request to approve the Board of Trustees regular closed session meeting, minutes of June 18, 2024. Two, request to approve the July 2nd, 2024 check run including ACH of 1,734,581.95. And ratify the June 21st, 2024 payroll of 398,251.11. Third, request to approve Brady Lodge rental with alcohol Saturday, August 10, 2024. Four, request to approve Brady Lodge rental with alcohol Saturday, September 21st, 2024. And lastly, request to approve Brady Lodge rental with alcohol Saturday, August 31st, 2024. Please, I need to move to approve.
I'd like to make a motion to remove item J2, request to approve the July 2nd check run including ACH and ratify the June 21st, 2024 payroll.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Regular business. What, excuse me?
I'm sorry. We need to go to K.
Oh, K, all right. Sorry. Okay, which is K? We, we, okay, we removed K from the agenda, yes.
K is items removed from the consent agenda. I removed the check run. Because there was a check that was issued to DLZ in the check run, I believe it was in, on page 30 of the run. There were three amounts in that check run, one for 51,601.44. And then there was two others, 352,125. Another one was 110,925. Both of those second amounts were actually, should have been paid under VIL construction. So we have pulled that check and we're going to reissue so that DLZ just gets the one amount. But we're going to add those two amounts to the VIL construction check that's in there. So it'll be a new total amount of 574,750. It doesn't change the overall check run. It's just, it was some internal checks. We had to void a check and then reissue. But I wanted to get approval on it tonight so that we can still release payment tomorrow. I just need a motion to approve the, now that check run if the board is in approval of us amending that check to DLZ. And then adding those two figures to VIL construction.
So moved.
Okay.
Second. Do you second? Second, yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
Welcome. Okay, we're going to regular business. We have a treasurer, Paul Brown. Thank you.
Sorry, excuse me. We amended the agenda to add the FOIA appeal first.
Oh, we're going to amend the FOIA appeals, okay. It's no hips, all right. We amend for the FOIA, okay?
Are you going to start with an opening or are you just going to have him, please?
Okay. Thank you, Carrie.
All right, Dan Kelly, Township Attorney. Just by way of process, under the FOIA Act for the state of Michigan, any refusal to produce documents to a FOIA request or can be appealed to the Township Board. It also can be appealed to the Circuit Court. In this case, we have a FOIA request from Terry Whitney. Certain documents were requested with regard to a videotape that was removed by ITTV. And our internal request or good faith search for those documents conducted by John Elke determined that we did not have any of the requested documents. Specifically, the documents requested, let me go to that section of the request. And there's only two requests, and I, I know Mr. Whitney is here, so he can explain the basis of his appeal. But the first request was the names and positions, titles and contact information for all individuals responsible for handling and managing video files for Independence Township Television. The response by the Township was that there are no such records. And then the fourth request that was also denied requested the deletion logs. And it's described as logs or records of any deletions or removals of videos from the IT, IT TV YouTube channel, including dates, times, file names, reasons for deletion, and the names of the individuals who performed these actions from 6/1/24 to 6/30/24. And again, the Township's response from Mr. Elke was that no such records exist. The appeal process was started by Mr. Whitney. He has the right to come and present his side or version of the facts to the Township. Township Board, the Township Board has the authority under the statute to reverse and order the Township to produce records. I would only indicate that the internal search by the employees of the Township have not produced any records. The Township Board can deny the request. And in the case of the Township Board's decision, we have to provide a written response to Mr. Whitney. So I would recommend that the motion simply state, no matter what you do, that a written response be prepared by the Township Attorney and released. So any questions on the process? Mr. Whitney would talk next with regard to his position on why he believes these records do exist. Fair? Yeah?
I don't have a question. I just think it's important to let the residents in the audience know that oftentimes a FOIA request can be denied because there isn't a document that suffices what you're asking for. And according to FOIA laws, you cannot create a document. So sometimes that puts us in a precarious way, but that is oftentimes why something could be denied is that there is not actually a physical document that I could, that somebody could hand my office that we could respond to your request. So I just wanted to make that clear. Sometimes people don't understand that. And you have to have actually a physical document to, that's reproducible to supply for a FOIA. But that's all I just.
Yeah, that's a very good point. The only thing I would add to that is that FOIA is only for documents. So questions that are asked, we often receive questions. We cannot respond to questions. We can only produce documents. Yes, treasurer.
I'll just point out that electronic documents we don't have on paper, those can be produced by printing them out. So emails, things of that nature, or some electronic record, certainly that can be FOIAed.
Yes, absolutely.
Hi, everyone. I'm Terry Whitney, if you haven't heard. 4814 Sundale. Sure, certainly enough, which I find interesting here is, I mean, we'll just go down the list here. You know, we had, we had on 6/19, we had this infomercial. All the candidates came in and did an infomercial, myself included. The morning of 6/20, the infomercial came out. There was an email around 7:14 in the morning. Got to see it, watched it. I was like, hey, this is pretty cool, guys, you know, I wish, you know, a couple of people I work with, like, hey, you know, I wish we could do this kind of little quality. Here and there. About two hours later, get a 401 error. 401 means it's unauthorized. Two minutes later, it goes to a 501 error. 501 error means that it's no longer exists. So when I look at, and when I created this FOIA request, and you know, granted, I've worked, you know, 20 plus years in IT and I don't expect anybody here to work in IT, maybe except for Chuck. That being stated, names, positions, titles, contact information of individuals responsible for handling, managing video content at Independence Town, Independence Township Television, ITTV. If you're telling me you don't have this, because this is part of our organizational chart. You guys, you know, it's out on our website, but somebody's telling me that doesn't exist. So item one, request denied. Somebody's lazy, maybe came in at 7:01, somebody's tired, whatever the case, I don't care. File handing procedures. Given that somebody just came online 20 minutes ago and said they don't really have a lot of direction, I'll believe that one, you know, request denied. Records do not exist. Video upload records. Got a picture right here. Got a, got a screenshot. Great screenshot. Print it out. Somebody wants a black and white copy or wants a color copy. Interestingly enough about this screenshot is this is YouTube's backend manager for YouTube videos. Now, and it's really hard to see, and I, you know, you guys can look around here. You see that? That right there is the person who's logged in. This is your control console. Great.
Yeah, you have to be in the podium. You have to address to the board.
Yeah, okay. At any rate, I'm sure you guys have a copy of this, right? You guys should have a copy of this. All right. When I asked for the deletion records, deletion records, because YouTube being a cloud service provider and being completely compliant with both US and Great Britain and the European Union data retention laws, they have access and deletion records. So when somebody says, hey, we don't have deletion logs? Well, you just sent me a video saying you deleted a video. So what is it? Either you have the log and you deleted the log or you just sent me a video that wasn't deleted. That, I mean, and then on top of all of that, which is just kind of crazy, technical handing, you know, and we're going to go deletion logs, request denied, records do not exist. Well, if the deletion logs don't exist, YouTube's not functioning. So which is it? Either somebody lied on the FOIA response or somebody doesn't know what they're doing. And I'll take somebody who doesn't know what they're doing. I'll accept that part of this. But what I will not accept is that there is, and just the very first thing I'm asking for, names and contact information of the, of just who's running ITTV. And that's obstructive. Saying that those records do not exist. What, what the heck? Are we, are we just paying magical ghosts to input things to our YouTube channel, our YouTube videos and ITTV? I don't think so. So when I sit there and I start looking down the rest of this list, and it just gets more and more infuriating, I think, hmm, deletion logs. These logs don't exist, but yet you sent me a video that was deleted. Therefore, deletion logs did exist. Because even if you deleted the deletion logs, those are recoverable. Which means there's a whole, and we just got done listening to three other people say they're having all kinds of other problems. Let's strike three folks. I want those logs. And I want you to produce them. Because if you don't, we'll go to court. And it won't be fun. Because it's obstruction. And somebody lied on this request. Thanks.
I had a question.
Sure.
Dan, that was the first, the number one thing that jumped out at me was, his first request was just, who are the, who runs the, you know, the ITV department? If there's no such document, then why wouldn't that information just be provided verbally upon request? I mean, it's not, you know, that, that to me throws up a red flag, like, we're not even willing, you know, there's got to be a process to tell you who's running the department, the television station for the township. We all know who it is. They just got an award. It's, was two meetings ago. So I guess that was my first stumbling block was how is it possible that just the energy was wasted, a FOIA request was wasted, a denial was done on, say, it was just that one item he was asking for, you know? How is it possible that that information is not really available to anyone asking?
Yeah, I mean, I don't know if he asked, to be honest with you, but I do know when you file a FOIA, we're not supposed to give answers to questions. We're not supposed to give verbal answers. Now, if somebody comes to the counter and asks a question, that's up to the employee whether they can provide that information, but that's not under the FOIA laws. So the FOIA laws are only for the production of documents.
Okay, so I guess I would.
Apparently, we do not have a document that has that information.
A job description for all of our employees?
Well, it's only for the employees that, you know, in this particular case have been handling or managing video files. So Mr. Elke interpreted that and provided a response that there is no such document that state, that provides the names, title of the employees that are handling and managing video files. There is no such document. Now, I can speculate that Mr. Elke probably is a person that does that function, but there's no document that has that. And I don't know, quite frankly, as we all know, ITTV is basically overseen by a separate board. So I don't know if they have job descriptions over there or not, to be honest with you.
Just seems to me like a little bit of a shell game on a simple question. Who's running the ITV station? You know, that's, that's, that we should be forthright. John should have just said, it's me and Bob and Jim or whoever. You know what I mean? And being able to produce, that doesn't make them involved in anything. It's just a simple question. Who runs a TV station and has township? That should be an easily, now, I don't know if Mr. Whitney just asked the question, you know, outright to Mr. Jose or to someone. I, I don't know that. I'm just saying, I get the loopholes in it. I don't like it. Like, it seems like we could avoid some of the stupidity of those things just by saying, oh, it's this guy that's, you know, or directing them to say, well, there's not going to be a formatted document for that, but if you just go into the, you know, the website or go to the directory or go see the supervisor, if someone can be able to produce. go to the directory, or go see the supervisor, if someone can be able to produce those names for you, you know, because it wasn't, it was just asking for the people that are involved, you know? So I get it, I guess I don't, you know, I just, that, that's a little bothersome, that we, that we as a township, in transparency, there's no mechanism in place just to answer a simple question, who runs a TV station? You know?
Yeah. So the only thing that I would say to that is, as I said, you can come to the counter, you can talk with Mr. Elke, you can talk with any other township official, and that information is often passed to residents by township officials. However, when you file a FOIA request, that's a different story. Now you're asking us to follow the law, and so the township follows the law. And if there is no document, there's only one response, we don't have a document that has that information. So.
Okay.
Now, I would only say this, I mean, the document was specific in terms of asking who managed, handled, or as I read, managed or handled the video files for Independence Township Television. So it is somewhat filtered down to who's managing and handling the video files. So if there is no document that's responsive to that, just providing an org chart isn't really the answer to what the question is. And we're not, we're, I can tell you, this township is very liberal in producing documents. If we have them, we produce them. Township employees primarily perform that function by doing a good faith search for the documents. I can't imagine that Mr. Elke has any reason to not produce that document if it exists. So that's, that's my only explanation for it.
Thank you. Trustee Alamadu?
I have one, because I'm not IT whatsoever. So I know how to put a video on YouTube, all your back-channel stuff you were talking about, I have no idea that exists. My question, is that something you should be FOIAing YouTube for? So-
Please, please.
Yeah, YouTube's private.
You have a question?
Yeah, YouTube's not subject to FOIA. So, yeah, they're a private entity.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else from the board?
Yeah, I just did a quick search, took me five seconds, went to Independence, Googled Independence Television, the webpage came up, I clicked staff, and there's seven people listed here. But to your point, there's no, there's no formal, and it lists job descriptions, a whole deal, from, from A to Z, including interns and everything. So, again, not, not certain, you know, what this qualifies as, but it's certainly transparent, open information, you know, that's out there already.
All right, I mean, I would assume so as well.
Okay.
Okay. So, the board needs to take a motion on the appeal. Three choices, either ask for further research by employees of the township, deny the request, or uphold the appeal.
I have another question.
Yeah.
On the, excuse me, on the video uploading records, now, that seems like something that would be, there would be, it's hard to talk about something you're not familiar with the process, but logic would say, and I know computer history, all that, that there's some, so, how would the person get, if we don't have records, you know, of certain things, and we have records of other, it's just, it's got to be frustrating for the residents to try to figure out how to get information if we don't have it, you know, there's got to be, you know, it just seems like there's got to be a, that this stuff is, digital stuff never goes away, that there's, now, maybe he's asking the wrong person, I don't know. But I don't want to just say, no, we don't have access to it, because we don't have someone who knows how to get access to it. I mean, is there a risk that we're asking people for documents that aren't, that don't have the capacity or that level to provide them? Because it's in somebody's database that we have access to, if we're putting stuff out on YouTube, you know, there's got to be records of certain things, and I'm not, I hate talking about subjects I'm not well-versed in, but I'm trying to get to a point that, I don't want to just say, well, I agree, he should be denied, if I can't prove that we've exhausted all our means. You're an attorney, he's an IT guy, I don't have an IT guy in the audience that works for the township that can confirm that he's right. So I don't, you know, I'm at a little quandary, I don't feel comfortable making that decision that, that we can't produce it, because I don't know what that technology is, and if we have somebody, so, I don't know.
So, the only, the only thing I can say to maybe help, first of all, you're right, I have no clue whether there's logs or not. However, the response was prepared in its normal fashion. I believe the clerk's office went out to IT TV and Mr. Elke and asked for a good free search to be conducted. It was, it produced no documents, and a response was created. When the appeal was filed, it was then double-checked with IT TV. So, all I can tell you is, is that they don't have the capacity to find this information that may or may not exist. What the township would be required to do is to retain an expert, to maybe dig into denial files, and we would come up with an estimate for that expense, and Mr. Whitney would be responsible for paying that expense. I don't know if that's a possibility here or not, but I can tell you that it wasn't as if we just asked him on a, you know, Monday morning, here's five minutes, respond. There was follow-up at least twice, and I believe even three times.
Right.
Just to make sure that we couldn't get those documents.
Sure.
And I've seen a lot of employee, you know, employee, you know, their guidelines, what their job descriptions are, there are things like that, I mean, and the request just asking, you know, is there training materials, are there manuals, is there any guidelines given to our staff that run the TV? We don't have any of those, there's no documents that outline any of that?
Well, there, the appeal was only asked to number one and number four. So the document, I believe that Mr. Whitney produced, was produced in response. Am I, I think I'm correct about that?
No.
No, you weren't? Okay. But the appeal that actually is before the board tonight is number one and number four, which is what I read earlier.
Okay.
Yep?
Yeah, I'm, I'm on the same page that Trustee Morocco is in terms of, I mean, I know that John Elke is fantastic at what he does, but he's, he's not an IT person. I, I think that's fair to say that he could have innocently and diligent, but diligently looked for said request, come up empty, as I probably would have. But I think there's at least a couple considerations I'm open to for the board's consideration is, perhaps we have our own IT manager, at little or no expense, do a perusal of, you know, said, you know, to look for said request. And if, if he comes up empty, I guess that Mr. Whitney's option, if he's willing to pay for a third party, then we could consider that option. I think we're speaking, at least with respect to the video files, like a 30-day window, so we're not asking for 10 years here, I would be a little troubled by that, right? But it is, I believe it's at least specific enough that it might not be too taxing, because we're talking planning commission, board meetings, special meetings, ZBA, so we're not talking about, you know, thousands of meetings necessarily, so, or video files. So, just my, my thoughts, and again, trying to look objectively on this issue.
Sure.
And there is, as I said, there's really three options, deny, uphold, or ask for further information.
Well, I have to tell the board, I work closely with IT TV, we have a great professional people, they deliver good results, they just got an award nationwide. I trusted their work, their ethic, and they delivered a great service to our community. So I think that, for what you just stated, he did above and beyond to provide the right information. We, we, in FOIA, we produce documents, and there's no documents about that, and he went above and beyond. I mean, it's, it's how I look at it. I mean, I look at it facts, factual. He did his job, yes, he did. Above and beyond, yes, he did. Two times or three times, so I don't see why we need to keep going with this, we already have fact, factual information. Anyone else?
Just to, I guess, contradict what you just said in a way, is that, I think what Mr. Tetter, Mr. Morocco was saying, was trying to get at, is that maybe there's, you know, we followed the letter of the law, but we can follow the spirit of the law. And, you know, I think, I think if we go back and we, we look, we should be able to provide some of this information. Either that, or, or like, say, lease employee, an outside service enough to investigate and, and give you, like, a rundown of how much it would cost to, to retrieve some of this stuff, if possible.
Okay, the spirit of the law, okay. That sounds good.
Good, yep. Brown?
So, I mean, we get a lot of FOIAs, and I know that in many cases, the FOIAs that are requested from the treasurer's office are as specific as actually telling us which report to run in BSNA, because the folks have, over the years, figured out, that's the report we need. Sometimes it has to do with mortgages or taxes, people research this tax information, those are public records. And so, so we get to a spot where we just, we know the report, we go run it, they told us exactly what to do. It gets a lot more difficult when, when someone's looking for something that is not common, and then, I guess my question is, if he's asked for something with three or four specific details associated with what that ask is, we've got something that had four pieces of it, but not the fifth, by, by FOIA law, do we say we don't have that, because he's asked for one more thing? Or do you give him the four pieces, and we don't have the rest?
Yeah, the short answer is you give him the four pieces.
We give him whatever we can, we don't say to him, go rewrite it and drop off this piece, and then we can produce it.
Right.
We, we would give whatever we had up to, even if it didn't have the full specifics of what he asked for, we give him part of it.
Yeah, it's supposed to be liberally interpreted.
Good.
Okay.
Okay.
Somebody would like to make a motion?
Well, I'd like to make a motion, Dan, but I don't see a sample of a motion, but somehow, in my spirit of motion-making, I'd like to make a motion that we use, that we, that we make, take another stab at it with somebody that's, that's job profession is more in line with the, the digital recovery that we're asking for, that is not John's job or what we hired John to do. So I, I don't feel that, I feel that we should try to put a little, one more stab at trying to get as many of the items off the list as possible in the next, you know, I, I didn't see that.
Yeah, well, we put in there-
Sample motion.
Yeah, the, a third option would be to direct the township to do something. I think you said it earlier, if you wanted IT to maybe go into the video studio and search records, that would be an appropriate motion.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion that we direct our IT guy to participate in the FOIA request by going and accessing the equipment required and reporting back to us if he can fulfill the, the request of the applicant.
Second point.
Sure.
I'd like to-
Excuse me, can you come to the podium? Yeah, please.
Given that I am an IT expert, I wouldn't mind just sitting in on that. I mean, it might cut down costs, might cut down time, we might just have this done in five minutes.
Dan?
Well, with all due respect, I don't think that's appropriate. I mean, it's a function of this township to provide responses to FOIAs. I have no idea whether there's confidential, oftentimes, not in this case, but oftentimes, I'm asked to review documents for personal information, for whether or not it should be exempt for whatever reason. I can't imagine it here, but I would also not want to have a non-t township employee participating.
It's also taking place in the school, and the school would have a say as to who's running the building.
That's a good point, yes. Yeah, I think there's, there is a very good point there, that while they are, in part, township employees, they're also school employees, as I understand it, and they are overseen by a separate commission. Now, they're still subject to FOIA, and the township provides guidance on FOIA, but the actual operations of IT TV are somewhat separated from the township, although co-mingled, if that makes sense.
I agree. I'd like to keep my motion as, as stated, with the, there was support.
Yeah, a second.
Okay.
Okay, it's going to be just a roll call, or?
Can we add one thing to that, that will request a 10-day extension to perform that?
10-day extension.
That's acceptable. I'd like to amend my motion to add a 10-day extension.
A second. Okay. Simple majority. Others in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay? Okay, all right. Now, we can move to regular business.
Correct.
Um, REUs, so, I don't know how many folks know what an REU is, it's a residential equivalency unit. For folks who are on the sewer system, one REU is what you pay quarterly for use of the sewer system, if you're on it, within the township. And going back to 2015, 2016, I came across what appeared to be an error. The township board had made a change, where apartments used to pay .6 of an REU. This was based on Oakland County's schedule that we, we go by, although the board has the right to adjust from that schedule, and that's in our ordinances. And we changed it to one, because our water study showed that apartments use the same amount of money as the average, you know, 1,200 or 1,300 square foot home in the township. And so we did that back in 14. In 16, can't remember how I came across it, but I came across an apartment that was paying .6. And so I, you know, started looking, and we found a group of apartments. We fixed that issue, which was likely a, an administrative error. And so we resolved that, we collected 100 and, I think, 110 or 20,000 dollars, two years they hadn't paid the correct amounts, and we had the right to go get that money. In fact, we, we had to go collect the money, because the law says we can't give away free services in our enterprise funds. Water's an enterprise fund, and sewer's an enterprise fund. We're not allowed to give it away. We can't negotiate with someone and say, well, we'll just charge a half, right? We don't do that, not allowed to. So that got resolved. A couple years later, I found one where a car wash had been underpaying. So this goes way back, and this is not just relegated to now, or even eight years ago, for 30 years, a car wash paid the wrong amount, underpaid. And, and we were able to go back and get six years' worth of money from that car wash. I came across what appeared to be, and again, I, my recollection is, I saw the utility bill being paid by Monarch Grove, and it didn't look high enough to me, based on how big I know that it is. And so I looked into it, I, I didn't think they were paying the right amount, and, and so, they in fact are not paying the right amount. They should be paying, I believe, 111 REUs and a little change, and they are, we're in the system at 50. So it's more than doubled, and the totals of that, from a sewer usage standpoint, are, you know, about 6,000 a quarter for eight quarters. So somewhere around 50 grand. We can go get that. In addition to that, capital connection charges, right? So when you join the sewer system, it's like a membership fee. You got to pay a capital connection charge to join. Every residential home pays it when they join, commercial properties pay it, but it's based on how many REUs there are. So the underpayment on, on the REU portion of that for the capital connection is about 150,000 dollars. We're owed, you know, probably 200,000 dollars. To me, this is something that's, a problem that has existed a long time, and for, for me, I'm not, I don't think, part of this says I want to do an internal audit, I don't think I should do an internal audit, I think we should have a third party audit these for our commercial, for our commercial customers. Residential's are easy, it's one-on-one, we know that's fine. I think, I'm looking for the board's input on that. And, and in addition to this, on the water side of it, we found that there was a home connected to water that was not in the system. No meter, not in our system, and had water for four years, and didn't pay for it. And so my concern is, how do we know there aren't more, and I have no clue how we would figure that out? And so I'm sort of adding to my request here, and I think the, the correct course of action. And again, I'm not trying to get into, again, I've already pointed out, this happened going back 30 years, so multiple administrations- And again, I'm not trying to get into, again, I've already pointed out, this happened going back 30 years, so multiple administrations over multiple employees. I'm trying to figure out how big the number is that I'm supposed to go and collect, because that's my responsibility. And to make sure we're collecting though, because if we don't collect the right amount, everyone else in the system ends up paying more. Because the enterprise funds are funded by the people who use it and your charges are based on how much, however much money is needed. So, collecting not enough from one impacts the others eventually. And that's why this is so important. So, I'm not trying to get into, you know, how it happened specifically. I'm asking that the board authorize me to go out and solicit bids from someone that can come in, do the audit on the existing REUs, as well as establish some way of knowing whether there are homes connected that aren't paying and that we don't know about. That's it, that's it in a nutshell.
Thank you, Paul. Anyone else would like to add something? Any other members that would like to?
Yeah, I'll make a quick comment. It seems logical to me to, to hire an outside firm to perform an external audit. And as Treasurer Brown said, this isn't, this isn't finger pointing at any, any one administration or any group of employees, but something that has happened on and off throughout a pretty long history here. Um, long before I contemplated being on the board. So, I think that external audit is warranted. Also, I, I'm reading in what you're proposing that this would be for commercial properties, but are you also suggesting that we should add a residential component? Or is there a, a means to randomly audit houses to ensure that their meters are working properly and, and are functioning or that they have one at all? Or is that not on the table?
I think we're already doing that.
We are?
Yeah, Dave.
Okay.
We're already doing that.
Couple, couple things here. So, first, I'd like to address the, the motion to do an audit. I support it 100%. There's been issues in the past, Treasurer Brown pointed out, that happened years ago. And I don't know if it's blind luck, you stumbled across it, or human error, it happens. So, there has to be a mechanism put in place to do these. I think an REU audit, until we change to possibly a flow-based billing, where the REU system would go away, other than for capital connection fees, be put in place. Uh, and we do it yearly. It's an audit. The township gets audited for their finances every year. I don't think this is any different. DPW will pay for it, it's, it's an enterprise fund expenditure, like Paul said. I fully, fully support it, I fully support it, it should be done by a third party as well. Get bids or we use, you know, contracted services we already have under contract to do this, to stay above board with everything. In the time that I've been here, we have, we've gone back and, and got, you know, 200 grand over this, you know, we have. So, and another thing, a benefit that I'd just like to point out about all of this too, is that we need to try to encourage maybe the village to get on board with this too, because they do their own billing and we bill our services to them based on the number of REUs they give us. Because REU, we do not do sewer billing for the village. That affects our income as well, that's another thing. We've been talking about the village and the way they do things. They bill for the sewer. Folks that live in the village of Clarkston, they go there, pay their sewer bill, they come here and pay the water bill. So, we helped them a couple of years ago. Paul mentioned that Oakland County Schedule A, which is their residential equivalent unit factor. Oakland County modified that in 2018, they changed it, I'm sorry. They changed the whole thing because water-saving techniques and, you know, faucets and all that stuff for now. So, we have to review ours, make sure we comply with that. It is a huge task. I'd fully say that right here in front of you, but it is a big task for us to do. Last time we did it was probably three years ago. And we did it again in, I think, 19, and then we found some issues in 16, early, late 15, 16. And, you know, it kind of cascaded back and we did go back and recoup a lot of money. So, I fully support an audit and I fully support that it should be done at least every year, no more than every two, you know, two years maximum. And, uh, and it should be done by a third party.
Can include the village?
Well, the village, you know, we'll have to review our contract that we have with the village when it comes to sewer services. We, right now, the, the contract, the governmental agreement we have with the village of Clarkston is for sewer maintenance. Have to review that and I might get with Dan just to review that, matter of fact, I will get with Dan to review that, to see how that falls into that, as far as the maintenance agreement. So, we don't have an agreement, we don't audit, we don't bill, you know, they do their own thing. But, those numbers have to be correct because our sewer billing, or I should say, our services we bill are based on the number of REUs the village has. And if they have, you know, if it's not calculated correctly, we did it, kind of a courtesy one, we helped them in 2018, I think it was, when the REU unit assignment factor was changed from Oakland County. They, they had no idea, they came and they, we sat in the break room at DPW and went through every address, every commercial address. Residential's are always one, unless it's a multifamily.
Sure. Okay, Paul. Just one question, the village, we wouldn't be involved in capital connection charges with them, right? Because that's them or we would?
Not for sewer.
Not for sewer, okay.
Yeah, not for sewer. So, and another thing, the processes that can be put in place, one of the things I would recommend that if we do an audit, which I strongly suggest we do, is we, in the RFP, we actually put in something in there that gives us the opportunity to identify issues that aren't taken care of. If an employee doesn't do something that they're supposed to do or something happens and something goes unnoticed and we find out about it four years later, then we'll know before then. Because it's accountability on everything, right? I take, you know, great pride in everything we do here, we need to make sure that we do this. I think it's a great idea.
Thanks, Dave. Yeah, I want to say something before I open to public. First of all, when I see this MAVE, I said, I agree with that. I agree with a full investigation and have a third party to do this. When I saw that MAVE, that this will be conducted by one of the fellow board members, I don't think so that, that will be good. I didn't have to be by a third party, I have to agree with you guys. Since what we've seen on social media, I got a lot of complaints and people brought my attention and all that, I believe that third party will be good. But not just for, for this issue, I think after I hear a comment for a former employee, also when I open and I'm gonna bring a bill, a proposal next, also for a financial audit, forensic audit as well. I think we need, I, I have to quote trustee Richie, the spirit of the law, and I agree with that. And I think not have to be just this one, I have, I believe we need to also have a forensic audit for our finances. We need to, I support transparency, like trustee Morocco support transparency 24/7, and I agree with him. We should open our books and everything and our residents deserve the truth and transparency. So, I support this 100%. I believe we can put it for a bid and we can get some engineering company or a third party to investigate and find out what happened. Because I don't know if former elected officials are involved in this or are employed, I don't know. But the facts and the matter are that Paul brought up a good point. Some, this is, somebody is getting free, uh, some discount or some free water and that's wrong. 100% support this. So, I guess we need to change this motion to, uh, we can put for a bid and get a, uh, forensic audit or some specialist or somebody, a third party for sure to do this. So, we need to change this motion, amend the motion, if you'd like to amend the motion.
Well, I'll move to authorize the Township Treasurer to seek bids for a third-party external audit of REU calculations for commercial properties, with the findings presented to the board for further consideration. Does that work?
As well as water.
As well as water connections.
For everything to do.
I support that.
We're gonna put for a bid, that's, it's gonna be for a bid. We're gonna, yeah.
Yeah. We had someone who was.
Yes, we will, before we vote, I mean, yeah, we'll, please come to the podium. State your name and address.
I'm Bob Futrell, 6660 Langle. I've been a builder for over 50 years. I've done a lot of, I've gone before more boards than I know, I can remember. And I dealt a lot with veterinary hospitals. And there was always a problem when it was determined the number, I, what is, what's?
REUs.
REUs.
Yeah, because do you pick it off of a chart? What, who assigns that value? Most of the time, it was negotiated. There was no hard, fast, you know, this type of business has to pay this many. We ended up actually taking a veterinary hospital that was operating with lots of sinks, lots of kennels. We actually got it metered on the well. And we found that they weren't using any more water than a four-bedroom, two-bath, two-bathroom house that did laundry. So, what criteria are you using to evaluate these new businesses that come in, you know? Is it a hard, fast rule? Do you have a, a chart that says, well, it's got so many square feet and it's got three water fountains and it's got two sinks and six bathrooms? So, many of them were negotiated. Hate to say that, but that's the way it works.
So, so, can I just be able to answer that for him? All right. One of the important things is that everyone's treated the same. It's the most important thing. You have to treat everyone who has the same type of business or similar business, you have to treat them the same, right? And as much as I'd like to have told my mom, you're the only one in the house, but you pay the same as the people that have five kids, we have to follow our ordinance. Our ordinance says we will follow the Oakland County schedule, unless the board takes an action not to. And that schedule was pretty robust in identifying a lot of different types of businesses. And we, we can, I can make that available, so you send it to you, something you might like to look at. I do think we have some responsibility to evaluate based on water usage for these businesses as well. And so, in the past, I have run some reports that tried to map out large REUs against how much water they used. I find that stuff sort of interesting from a statistical standpoint. That probably is part of what is going to happen when we try to go to flow-based, the flow-based model. Because then it's truly how much water's being used impacts how much you're paying for sewer. So, it's an imperfect system, but right now, we have to use it and make sure everyone's treated the same.
But you keep reflecting back to, you don't know how it got where it was, that's how it got where it was. It was almost negotiated.
Oh, I understand your point, yep.
So, and many times, it was over-negotiated and, you know, my, my clients would be hurt by it. So, we had to go in and improve our point.
Thank you, thank you.
Yes, Don, oops, excuse me. Don Tillman, 7755 Newport. I guess the question I gotta ask Dave is, when was the last audit?
The last audit on that? I believe it was 20, we did a commercial audit in 2019 or 2020 before COVID.
Okay. And some of them commercial buildings have been there a long time before that audit? I'm just curious of how they slipped by, if you said there's been there for, I don't know.
Well, yeah, so I, the, the ones I say were 30 years ago, we found those before 19.
Okay, but.
The one, the one, Monarch Grove, of course, wasn't there in 19, that's, so that's more recent.
So, was a car wash there before 19?
A car wash, we found that in 18.
So, that's already been?
That's been, that's been fixed.
So, what's the other commercials you're talking?
Apartments.
Has that's been since 19, built before 19?
No, no, that was before, that was in, that was in 2016. In fact, it was Lancaster Lakes, which has a lot of apartments. And Chateau Villa on the Andersonville Road. Those two were not changed to one. Green Lake, all the other apartments were all changed to one. So, it was not, oh, it was not a large percentage of the apartments, but it was enough to be a, a good-sized number.
I guess where I'm coming from is how it got neglected the night, in 2019, 2019, I'm sorry. I mean.
I'm not aware of any, I'm not aware of anything that was missed in the 19. When we, and by the way, when we say we have an audit, this are internal, it was done internally, correct? So, that, we, we've never had an external audit of that.
It just seems a little confusing to me that all of a sudden, since 19, that we got this money behind on water. I, you know, when I'm coming, maybe you don't see what I'm saying. Well, water or sewer or whatever.
Well, sewer.
Yeah.
But, but the one I'm talking about now, I, I, my reason for, and I understand what your point is. My reason for bringing up the prior ones was really just to indicate this is not a new issue.
Okay.
The ones that happened before 19 were the, were the apartments and the car wash.
Okay.
And those came before the board in both open and closed sessions. There are decisions were made on how to resolve them and we went and collected the money. That was back owed. So, we didn't lose out on anything on those.
So, the audit 19 caught them, right?
No, no, not 19, we caught these before 19. 19 was done as a precaution.
Okay.
And I'm not aware of anything being caught or if they did, they resolved it then.
We made changes.
So, they made some changes.
Okay.
So, the big issue now on Monarch Grove, that's relatively new, this is after, after 19.
Right, right. Thank you.
Anyone else, please come to the podium, state your name and address, if you want to comment on this proposal.
David Hayward, 6764 Berwick Drive. I just have one question, I guess. I don't understand why it's been five and a half years then, I guess, since the last audit? And why now? And why all of a sudden? Especially, Paul, if you've known this kind of stuff's been going on for a long time. Uh, you've seen it before, it's been going on 30 years, why we waited five and a half years? Um, and you've been on this board for a long time, why now? What, what happened now? Where all of a sudden did this pop up? Where'd you get this information?
Sure.
That you didn't see last month, the month before, last year? That's all.
I'd be happy to answer that.
Okay.
I found the Monarch Grove problem in, in November.
Okay.
And I emailed the supervisor and I was going to do an audit on that issue and assist in looking at if, what, what that is and get it resolved. The supervisor told me his people would handle it and I was told not to. So, you asked, wasn't my intention to say that, but you've asked.
Okay, so, that's fine.
Can I finish, can I finish, please?
Sure.
Okay? I asked again in February, where are we at on this? 50 REUs, it's gotta be more than that. I got nothing. I asked again in June, Mr. Supervisor, we, someone's gotta do something, when am I gonna get the information? The next day, I'm told it's 111 REUs and we're owed 200,000 dollars. So, you asked the question, that's the answer. I asked for this to be done in November, this is not political, not at all. Because if it was, I could have said this at the beginning. I wasn't gonna bring that up. I didn't bring it up. He did. And I'm angry because I wanted to solve this in November. People come up here and they want to say things to try and tear us down or me, and I take it, okay? But I've got the emails. And the emails to the supervisor and him telling me, we'll take care of it, don't worry about it. And seven months later, we're owed 200 grand on that one and probably some more, not that much more, I don't think. And that's why I brought this and presented it the way I did, because I didn't want it to be political.
So, are there other businesses on that as well or is this just the only one?
I, I suspect that there's errors on Comfort Inn and Well Bridge and Comfort Care on White Lake, on White Lake Road. I don't think they're at this size. I think they're much, much, much smaller than that, is my initial thought. But again, I want a third party to come in and look at it.
Well, I just want you to know too, Paul, it has nothing, I, I don't care, I want the truth, period. I don't care who looks bad, who looks good, I, I don't care, I just want truth, that's all. And if that's the truth, that's fine. I, it's, my feelings aren't hurt about that.
Happy to send you the emails.
That would be, it's not, you know what, Jose's sitting here, if he wants to address it, he can, or anybody else, it's fine. I just, I just want to know what's, I have questions and I just, you gave me an answer and I appreciate it, thank you.
Okay, so you're gonna send the emails to?
Sure.
Yeah, so, back to, I got the emails, I replied the emails. When I started conducting investigation, it come up that it was involved some previous administration, then was allowing to this to happen before I took office. And then I started investigation because it's a serious, it's a serious allegations there. It's involving probably employees, it's involving previous administrations, I'm talking about elected officials. So, it's involving a lot and I can investigate that. That's why it's critical, important to get this forensic investigation and added about this. It's not just a simple email with an answer, it's involve a lot of people here. And I was, it was, this happened before I took office, before November 2022. That's all I have to say. But yeah, since we wanna provide the emails, that's good. That's good, we're providing all the emails, all the communications, I'm happy to provide my emails too.
Yeah, I just, I usually refrain and I'm gonna try and be as above board as I can in my comments, but this has been an issue that's been ignored for several months. The board was brought in, it was an A to B conversation between the Treasurer and the. The board was brought in, it was an A to B conversation between the treasurer and the supervisor, and it's been largely ignored. I have read the emails, and I'm glad that Treasurer Brown has stepped forward and proposed third-party audit of this situation, and it's entitled to be remedied, and let's move on.
We have a motion and a second?
Yeah, we have a motion and a second, but also when I point out that, oh, please, come in.
I'm sorry, Ray.
Ray Llewellyn, 9254 Pine Knob Road. I have a couple of questions. How long ago was Monarch Grove opened? It's been in the last five years. So who handles the connections at these facilities? Is it the DPW or is it, you know, John Doe's, you know, connection service? I mean, whoever does the connections, I would think that they would know, okay, I'm connecting at 9254 Pine Knob Road, and it's a single-family home, or I'm connecting at Monarch Grove. The same way with Comfort Inn. They should know that it's got 500 rooms or 100. I mean, I'm just saying, I don't know what department it is, if it's, maybe it's a third-party that does it.
Okay. Hold on, hold on. We don't wanna start getting into things involving employees because employees have rights. Like I said in the very beginning, we don't wanna talk about that piece of this because it's unfair. Right now, I just wanna figure out how much money we're owed, and then as that comes in, we can then figure out the process for making sure those things don't happen. But I don't think this is the appropriate spot to start talking about that piece. I hope you'll appreciate that.
Okay, well, I just wanna comment back to that. Okay, I'll accept that. But I'll also comment to what Jose said about the forensic audit, and I think that that's a good one too.
Right. Absolutely.
Because my thought is, let's open the checkbook up and look all the way through.
Sure.
If we're gonna spend money on this audit, then let's spend it over here too.
Exactly.
And that's all I have to say.
Yes, absolutely. Good. Thank you. Anyone else? Sure, you can come and comment for sure.
My name's Pam Brookshire. I live at 6018 South Main. I just have, I don't know if this is appropriate, but can I ask if our, the general books are balanced? Are you running in the black or are you running in the red right now? Can you give me an amount? I mean, you should have it in your records. Your treasurer should definitely have it. I used to sit on a board.
I'm sorry. So the treasurer is not responsible, but the supervisor's responsible for all the budgets, and the financial statements come out of the clerk's office. So the clerk is actually the chief financial officer. Our auditor was here, what, four or five weeks ago?
I mean, don't you, at a monthly meeting, don't you say, we have this much money, the township has this much money, this is our goal for roads, this is...
We probably are off topic.
I've sat on a sportsman's club board for 25-plus years. And every, every meeting, and I'm not being critical, I'm trying to learn. Every month, there was a treasurer report and it would say, and then we talked about a budget once a year, we're gonna do this, 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 with this money. And yes, you should have a forensic audit. If you haven't had one, you need one. And in the meantime, I'm just trying to find out where we're sitting financially, and nobody can give me answers. Like, are we a million in the hole? Are we a million to the good? Did we break even? You have a budget.
I understand that you're, I'm gonna answer Jose because she's staring right at me.
No, no, I don't mean that I'm just looking at you. Or do you want me to look?
If you'd like to come, if you'd like to, you wanna answer her questions or you'd like me to?
I'm just talking to all of you, actually, but you kind of are in my eye, you know, it's not personal.
I know, I know, I like your glasses too. So if, right now, we're dealing with a very specific issue, and we've kind of gone off topic.
I don't wanna do that. That's why I'm asking.
No, no, I don't. If you'd like to come in tomorrow or Thursday, I'll sit down and show you where all the financial information is at, including the audit. It's all available online. I can walk you through that and show you where we're at. We are in the black, we are in sound financial shape. But I can show you that versus telling you that. Yeah. So if you'd like to come in either tomorrow or Thursday, I'm right upstairs in the corner and I'm happy to show you those things.
Okay, and then...
But, but I still are gonna be proposing in the next board meeting, I'm gonna bring a proposal to approve, to look for a forensic audit for our finances as well, because I'm very concerned about what the formal...
When was the last time you did a forensic? As the township, not personal, I'm just asking, when was the last time Independence, this place, had a forensic?
We have audit every...
Audit.
No forensic though. Paul? So, so there's a difference between an audit and a forensic audit?
Absolutely.
Our audit is done by yo and yo. We actually have a new auditor this year who replaced Plant Moran. Having a new auditor is always good, I think, because they look at things with a different perspective. Forensic auditing is typically done when there's a problem that's been found. You've got something specific that they're going to go look at. The last time we had something like this, there were concerns about, I think I'm okay to talk about this, because they didn't find anything. There were some concerns about how hours are being calculated for time sheets for someone, and we said, yeah, let's have a forensic auditor come in and look at that item. So they didn't, they didn't find any issues, and that's probably been seven or eight years ago, my recollection.
Okay. No, we're talking about...
So to say we're gonna have a forensic audit, what are they auditing? Because forensic auditors are about $300 an hour. I think that's what we paid the one who came for that, because it's not our standard auditor that comes in. Those are 150 bucks an hour. You get a forensic auditor coming in, they have to know what they're trying to look for. Certainly understand the sentiment of saying, I wanna have a forensic audit, but those are typically narrow in scope because of very specific issues. And our audit costs 50, $60,000, the one we have. Multiply that by three, and someone who doesn't know what they're looking for, we could spend $200,000 having a forensic audit. And I don't wanna waste taxpayer money. Our audits come back with a clean opinion. And so I'm not sure what piece we're looking at. The auditor's opinion on the last audit was unmodified opinion, that's the highest opinion they give, unmodified. So they, they didn't indicate that we should change anything relative to our financial statements or find, or find any type of financial, you know, areas where they, where they think a forensic audit would have been needed, because they'd have been required to tell us that.
Okay, so the reason I'm asking to see if you're gonna do a forensic, it's been seven years. I've been here just tonight, and a woman's on the screen talking about getting a job, and I don't know the story, so, but there's a discretion on books and training and money, a sexual harassment suit. Okay, I see unrest there. Talking to the other gentleman in Monarch Buildings, commercial buildings, not, not knowing where all your accounts are and how many, or, you know, I think you follow what I'm getting at. There's discrepancy there. I think you should do, I just wanted to audit it, but I'd like to know where the money is too, but I'm not opposed to a forensic. It's been seven years, and you got a sexual harassment suit that's gonna be paying a lot of money, or already has been, and her books weren't right because allegedly, she doesn't have a job now, but there is no training.
We're off topic here. I've got a motion on the table.
It's very much a topic. I'm seeing, I personally am seeing that things aren't, there's problems. It's not Lily White, you're talking about problems, so an audit needs to be done. And I'm not looking at you, Paul, but you are in my, I don't know where to...
Yeah, please.
It's not personal. I'm not going after anybody. I'm ask, I see that you, there's some nasty stuff going on, and as a person that lives here, I'd like to know where the money's at and where it's going. And why do you have a sexual harassment? That will be for the next...
Wait, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
You said, why do I have a sexual harassment?
I'm talking about our community.
Listen, people hear this stuff. Don't say things like that. That's unfair to people. No one said anything about me. Are you gonna control this?
She's not accusing anyone.
Anyways, I personally see that there isn't...
There's a motion on the table, I'm calling the question.
I know, okay.
I'm just seeing that...
I called the question.
Somebody has to second.
I'll second.
No, when he calls the question, you have to have a vote.
Yeah.
All right.
That's all.
Okay.
I'm not going after anybody.
I know, you have to...
Come see me tomorrow or Thursday. Like I said, happy to show you what you're looking for. Yeah, I'll be here. Yep, I'm available. You got it.
Mr. Wilson would like to say a few words.
He called the question.
I've called the question.
He called the question.
There is no more comment.
There's no more comment, because they, they don't want the public to speak, so some questions. Right, that's why, that's a part of it, I understand, that's why.
Not because we don't want people to speak?
Right, okay. I know, I said right. Okay. So motion is made, and then a simple majority, but this is for the, for authorized, yeah, for a bit, okay. All right, all, motion has been made, right? So all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Second? Then, you wanna present this? Yeah, this is about the DDA that's on Dixie Highway.
All right, so before the board is the completion of something that we've talked about previously, and that is the purchase of property at, I'm sorry, the address...
5854.
Yeah, thank you. 5854 Dixie Road. This is an intergovernmental agreement that allows for a lease between the township, who's basically fronting the money for the purchase at 175 for the lot. It will be paid back in three increments of $60,000 payments by the DDA, and then thereafter, leased by the DDA on $1 per year. It will be owned by the township but operated and maintained by the DDA for as long as the DDA exists. So the inter-local agreement is kind of tied to the purchase agreement, which the board previously approved, I believe, back in May.
Okay. Any questions? I think this is a good move. I mean, Sam, you sit in the DDA, do you have any comment?
Well, this is something that we've been trying to get done for a long time. I know, I've been working on it 10 years. We've gotta make an investment in Dixie Highway. We need to change the look of it. We need to show that we're, we're investing in it. It's one of the oldest U.S. highways. This is a unique opportunity. We have an opportunity to buy a very small parcel of land for a very little amount of money, right at the entranceway of the township. The DDA's, so the residents know the money that we're spending on this property, half of it comes from taxpayers who live in the district, and the other half of it comes from money that we would have given to the county, Oakland University, and other amenities that we would have been giving money to, which we're capturing and keeping to reinvest in Dixie Highway. So this money that we're using is not money that's generated from the residents, it's not money that's taxpayers' money. It's solely money that's, that's being funded by the people who will benefit from it, the people on Dixie Highway and in Downtown Development Authority, so we wanna, we wanna identify ourselves from Waterford, where you crossed the line. We've been trying to do that. This will give us an opportunity to put in, put in some green space and a nice sign and a place to sit down, a little pocket park, hopefully. And it's, there aren't any other parcels that are available or this small on Dixie, so it's really, just everything fell into place exactly, that we could find the very smallest parcel for the most reasonable price. The person selling it negotiated down the price to work with us, and it's a big deal. It's gonna make a big deal to Dixie. It's gonna show the, it's gonna hopefully spark more investment and do everything that it said, and it's gonna give us an opportunity to, to do something significant, more than just putting flags on a light pole or planting flowers. It's gonna, it's gonna identify that entranceway, which we've been trying to do forever, so...
Right. Thank you, Sam.
That's what we're trying to do, wrap this up.
Treasurer Brown.
So I often like to try to take part of these, this tax, incremental tax financing piece, which sounds confusing to me even as a CPA, and try to put it into layman's terms. For those who don't know, I'm sure some of you already do. So the expenses related to buying this park are not being paid for by anyone who's not in the Dixie corridor. And so the way this thing works, and I'm really glad Sam sort of pulled this scene together when we restarted this district, it's mapped out along Dixie Highway, and there's lots of areas that need to be improved along Dixie Highway. They decide, how much are the properties worth on Dixie Highway right now? Okay? Okay, we know what the number is. We start making improvements to it, and the increase in taxable value just on those properties, the Downtown Development Authority gets to capture some of those taxes from increases, not just from township's monies, but from the other entities that also apply taxes. Those monies are used to make the improvements in that area. So it is somewhat self-contained, but I think the whole township then benefits from the fact that the property owners start seeing others improving, and they will then invest money in their own properties, realizing this is a chance for us to really improve the values of our properties. That's sort of the intent. Do I got that kind of right?
Yep, and throw the Mass Transit Authority tax in there that we're getting nothing for, so at least we're getting some of that money back, which is huge, because every penny of that we can get out of the county for services they're not rendering is, is a benefit, so...
Right, and something that we need to point out is one of the, the reason we're reactive to the DDA because it was inactive for a while, is because a lot of business owners and people that live nearby Dixie Highway, they really wanna see something going on and realize Dixie Highway, because it was kind of abandoned, and some people didn't feel that it's attracting or appealing for business people or some of the business owners down there on Dixie Highway. By doing this, it's gonna help a lot, because now the DDA will be more active addressing those issues and realizing Dixie Highway is making more attractive, and it's something that's working out. And by the way, they have two boards. One is the board of the business people near Dixie Highway, and the other board, there's part of the DDA is residents that live nearby. By having those, we have two group of people that bring some, bring input and help us out to make a decision, and this is a good start for us. Kim, yes, you can come to the podium. Kim Fegler as Township Assessor.
Good evening. I just wanna clarify that the DDA also takes in White Lake Road west of Dixie Highway and a few of the parcels going north towards Wentz Funeral Home on M15. So it's not just Dixie, it's a larger capture area.
Thank you. Thanks. Okay, somebody would like to make a motion? Somebody would like to speak, please? Sure, come to the podium, let's take your name and address, please.
Why I decided to be a trustee was, I had explained before, the police department...
Excuse me, your name and address, please.
Tina Haas, 6292 Lake Walden Drive, Clarkston, sorry. You know, you wanna build and build, but our, on Dixie High, whatever, I would rather have the money right now with all this building and crimes and what have you. We need to help the police department. We need to enlarge that substation like I mentioned before. And they're in dire need, they've been asking the previous board, this board, and it's not going anywhere. Why, why don't we take care of them first? I mean, more, the population, I mean, living in Lake Walden Village, that traffic, I can't[1763.34] that traffic, I can't even get out of there. We've got Myers going in there. We've got all these companies, like I heard now, Tim Hortons. That's going to be apartments over there. A lot of people talk. And the thing is, we need a police and fire department substation. We have to enlarge it. They are so squishy. We've got four detectives or just, there's no privacy, no dividers. So I like to, I like to invest in that right now before we go on to other construction. But nobody listens. The board, like I said, the previous and now, and I've talked to the chief police. I've talked to the fire department. So I really think we should start there first. Because they need, they need traffic officers. They need more detectives and what? So please, you know, first our police. Thank you.
No, thank you. Thank you for your input. We are raising different issues and the DDA is to revitalize and help Dixie Highway and way late like our assessor pointed out. But we, in one year and a half, we've done above and beyond. You're talking about infrastructure. We improve infrastructure. Right now, Fire Station One is getting improved. EPW is getting improved. And then, of course, our police is next. But we're doing a lot step by step. Okay, we have a motion and I think it's all right.
We don't have a motion, yeah.
Want to make a motion? Okay, all right. Somebody would like to?
I'd like to move to adopt Resolution Number two-zero-two-four-dash-zero-one-four of the Board of Trustees authorizing the township supervisor to execute the purchase agreement for five-eight-five-four Dixie Highway to take all steps necessary to close on the subject property and execute the intergovernment lease agreement with the Downtown Development Authority.
Support.
Okay, so roll call.
Clerk Newbeck, yes. Treasure Brown?
Yes.
Trustee Morocco?
Yes.
Trustee Nalamothu?
Yes.
Trustee Ritchie?
Yes.
Trustee Tetter?
Yes.
And Supervisor Aliaga?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thanks. Okay, now we're going to move to closed session.
I'd like to make a motion to enter into closed session for the purpose of discussing written confidential legal opinions and including assessing Director Kimberly Fagley in the relevant discussion pursuant to MCL fifteen-point-two-six-eight-one-H and MCL fifteen-point-two-four-three-one-G.
Support.
At seven forty-eight P.M.
Okay.
It's a roll call.
Okay, roll call.
Treasure Brown?
Yes.
Trustee Morocco?
Yes.
Trustee Nalamothu?
Yes.
Trustee Ritchie?
Yes.
Trustee Tetter?
Yes.
Supervisor Aliaga?
Yes.
And Clerk Newbeck, yes.
I would just suggest that we each bring both copies of the confidential opinions upstairs with us.
Hi.
Okay.
Okay. Alright, so we are back and then uh we have to make a motion for the Kerry, have we have the motion or no?
I do not have a motion.
Oh, then you have the motion ready for us for the
Yeah, yes, I don't know the name.
Yeah, what is that Kim?
Oh, is it Justin?
Yeah.
Justin Harold.
Yeah, so um based upon the advice of the township assessor, the motion would be to remove Justin Hollander?
Harold.
Harold.
Harold, I'm sorry, Justin Harold from the Board of Review. That's all.
So moved.
Okay, that will be simple majority. Simple majority.
Simple majority.
Okay.
I'd like to make the motion to recuse myself. I know all the parties involved, I know the property involved.
Mm-hmm.
I support the recusal.
Thank you.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, now the motion has made and has been second for removal
Somebody agreed with that motion?
The motion? We okay with the motion? Okay, alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Communications feature agenda items report. Um report of building department June twenty twenty four, election commission February six twenty twenty four, safety path advisory committee March fourteen twenty twenty four, safety path advisory committee April ten twenty twenty four. Board member comments? No? Okay, any other motion to adjourn?
We'll do adjourn.
All those, okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Kerry?